Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the -- excuse me, welcome to the Run of the Ead Planning and Zoning Board. I ask everyone to please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act has been given by the clerk in the following manner: posted on the bulletin board in the borough's office and de-mailed to the area post. If we may have roll call, please.
Mr. McHaren.
Yes.
Ms. Alveron.
Here.
Ms. Gushen, here. Mr. Buckheim?
Here.
Mr. Vanella?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn, somebody. Pardon me. Ms. Farwin, here. Mr. Woza?
Here.
Mary C. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Sepira?
Here.
Ms. Burke?
Here.
Ms. Rinselli?
Here.
Mr. Rowan?
Here.
Mr. Box?
Here.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, may we have swearing of our professionals, please?
Yes. Steve, if you raise your right hand, we solemnly swear that the testimony you're going to give to this board tonight regarding any and all applications which may be heard this evening is truthful and accurate and just pure knowledge. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next order of business will be a request for the approval of the minutes from the January 22nd meeting. Are there any questions or amendments to those minutes? I'll take a motion on the floor.
You can motion.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Xavier, thank you. The next order of business is the approval of Resolution 2409. Mr. Rowan.
Okay, this was an application, I asked meeting found in a run of the Ead at 129 South Black Forest Pike, lot 1 of 5, lot 7, which property lies within our commercial zone district. This was an application regarding certain bulk variances for signage improvements on the -- on the --
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2409 as read.
Make a motion.
Mr. Vanella?
Second.
Ms. Gushen, we have roll call, please.
Ms. McHaren?
Yes.
Mr. Alveron?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim?
Yes.
Mr. Vanella?
Yes.
Mr. Woza?
Yes.
Ms. Sepira?
Yes.
Good job. And you. Next order of business is Application 2501. Mr. Rowan?
Yes, Alley Logistics LLC, come on up.
This is a use variance?
Oh, yes, you and the councilman that --
I'll go down to my office, just call me when you need it.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Sarah Warner. I'm with the law firm of crime, Tevela, and Misselli, representing the applicant Alley Logistics LLC. We are before you this evening seeking a use variance with regard to property located at 3 East 10th Avenue, lot 33, lot 9. The property is currently developed with a building that contains two residential dwelling units and a commercial unit. The commercial unit is currently vacant and has been for some time. The two residential units, though, are currently occupied. Those two existing units are two bedrooms each, just in reference. We're before you this evening seeking the use variance in order to convert the existing commercial unit, which as I mentioned is vacant, to a third residential dwelling unit. Because this is located in the commercial zone, a use variance is obviously needed. I have with me tonight two witnesses. You'll be hearing from Mr. Shahada Ali, who is the applicant and owner of the property, as well as Bruce McKenna of Monarch Surveying and Engineering, who is applicant, both their engineer and their planner. He'll be speaking mainly to the use variance and the required justifications under the municipal land use law.
Okay, Sarah, not to interrupt you, but I can swear your witness is in so I don't forget sometime during the meeting. Folks, anybody that's going to give testimony in this application, please stand and raise your right hand. Solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is truthful and accurate and just pure knowledge.
Okay.
Before I call my first witness, I just wanted to note that we are in receipt of Mr. Box's February 19th, 2025 review letter, and I'm happy to report we have no -- take no issue complying with all the comments contained therein. A number of these comments will be addressed through the testimony, but to the extent additional information or any revisions are required, we're happy to submit those as a condition of any approval. So with that, Mr. Ali, if you'd please come forward. I'm going to share the microphone with you, so sorry if I'm getting close on the -- You're, of course, familiar with the subject property, correct?
Could we get your name again? I'm sorry, Mr. Ali.
My name is Shahada Ali. I'm the owner of Alley Logistics. I'm the building owner.
Thank you.
Thank you. As I stated, the property is currently developed. It's one building that has two residential units and one commercial unit, correct?
Yes.
And the residential units are currently being occupied?
Yes.
The commercial unit is vacant?
Vacant.
And as I stated, you're simply looking to convert that commercial unit into a third residential dwelling unit, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The new unit, it'll be three bedroom?
Yeah, it's two bedroom and the top will be three bedrooms, yes.
Three bedrooms, okay. And there's a basement on the property, correct?
Yes.
The only unit that will have access to the basement is the new unit that you're removing, correct?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And how will they gain access to that unit?
We'll have to open the stairs from the bottom, the basement, to the top.
Okay, so when you're in the basement, you can only go to it through that new -- what is currently the commercial unit?
Yes.
Okay. Extremely clear, the other two units can't access it? It's not a community space?
No.
And there is an access point on the exterior of the building as well?
The access point is one in the 3rd Avenue.
Yes, okay. Speaking to the exterior, you're not proposing any changes to the actual footprint of the building, right?
No.
Okay, so no expansions, additions, anything of that nature?
No.
If anything, you may update one of the doors to make it more residential up here?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So most of the improvements will be interior fit out for the property?
Yes.
Do you understand that if you were to get approved tonight, the basement can never be converted to a fourth unit, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So three units max? So the three units, will they each be separately metered for utilities?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be no common expenses shared, okay. I mentioned that we received Mr. Box's February 19th review letter, and you and I have had a chance to review it, correct?
Yes.
All right, at this point, I just want to run through some of the items in his letter to confirm some of the testimony you requested. You can stay on up, I have a few questions for you.
Okay.
With respect to the parking, understanding Mr. McKenna will address that in more length from an engineering and planning standpoint, do you, as the property owner, feel that the amount of parking on site is sufficient for three residential units?
Absolutely, yes.
And there is, including the driveway, a total of seven parking spaces?
Yes.
And again, Mr. McKenna will address this further, but you don't take any issue providing ADA-compliant parking space, correct?
Yes.
Okay. For trash and recycling, will each of the occupants or someone from each unit be responsible for their own refuse?
Yes.
And you use the municipal trash service, correct?
Yes.
To roll the cans out, to pick it up?
Yes.
Are you amenable to installing a fenced trash enclosure area to screen the trash receptacles from the roadways?
Yes.
Okay. Speaking of the fencing, there's currently a wood fence on the property, right?
Yes.
And it is dilapidated in some areas?
Yes.
You're proposing to replace that with a new vinyl fence, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Finally, or almost finally, there is a commercial sign structure on the property that obviously serves the commercial unit. You'll be taking that down, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then the last thing I believe that was in Mr. Box's letter that I need you to address is the lighting in the parking area. There are some lights there currently, correct?
Yes, we'll update it.
You'll update it as needed, that was my question. So you'll provide additional lighting to the extent it's bound to be needed?
Yes.
All right. That is all the questions I have for you. Stay here one moment. If anyone has any questions of Mr. Ali directly, he's happy to answer them, unless you prefer to hold your questions till the end.
I have no questions at this point in time, Mr. Ali. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, if I could please call Mr. McKenna. Thank you, Mr. Ali. Good evening, Mr. McKenna. You've already been sworn, but could you please repeat your name and provide the board with a brief overview of your educational and professional background?
Sure. Bruce McKenna, Monarch Surveying Engineering, professional engineer, professional land surveyor, professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
All right, and all your licenses are currently in good standing?
They are.
And Mr. McKenna's already been running that through this board?
I think he's here.
Yes.
Thank you. You understand you're representing the applicant tonight as both an engineer and a planner, correct?
That is correct.
And you're familiar with the application that was submitted to the board?
I am.
Could you please orient the board with the property? I see you pulled up an aerial here. If we can mark this exhibit A1.
That is, okay, a rendering of --
The side aerial, yes. So what I did was I provided a side aerial to give you an idea as to all the surrounding areas for the property. As you can see, it's located at the corner of 10th Avenue and Black Forest Pike, literally right across the street from the library building. And there's another commercial building across the street, as well as one to the rear as well. Going north toward to the upper part of the aerial, you'll see a lot of residential houses that extend along 10th as well as 11th. And basically, this is an extension of the residential area, and that's what Mr. Ali would like to do, is to extend and provide additional residential units in lieu of a commercial unit.
Obviously, this evening you'll be providing the testimony with regard to the use variance, which is why we're here, but before we turn to that, I'd like to just address a few of the site comments in Mr. Box's review letter, specifically with regard to parking. Can you provide an overview of what the parking situation is on site?
Right now, there's a parking area to the rear of the building, right off Black Forest Pike. It's a large paved area that is basically utilized for parking. At the moment, we feel we can provide additional six for -- identify six individual parking spaces for the site. There's also another parking space that comes right off of 10th Avenue, right in front of the building. In talking with Mr. Ali, it was suggested that since the front of the building has ADA accessibility, that we could expand that parking area along 10th Avenue to provide the ADA parking space, and thereby they would have direct access to the front of the building once he remodels and once he rebuilds, he's a consistent part of the building.
Thank you. One last thing with parking, there was a comment with regard to signage. It's your understanding that we're not proposing to designate any specific spaces for any specific occupant?
No. At this point, once again, we don't know which occupants are going to have vehicles, which one are not, but you would have at least two vehicles per unit, which would meet basically RSIS standards, as well as the other handicap accessible buildings, so you would have seven individual identifiable spaces. But once again, I don't think a disjuncture is necessary to identify specific spaces for each tenant.
Would you, woman, because of past experience?
We could. My next question actually is going to be, would we be amenable to providing general signage at the parking areas for residents only?
Yeah, that's one thing I would suggest, because you don't want other uses to utilize that parking space for the occasioned uses, so we would identify those for specific residents, and they would identify them accordingly.
Typically, we do request, especially, it's going to be three units, two per unit.
Right.
And if it has, we found that if it is signed, you know, for the individual units, it stops a lot of confusion later.
Yeah, that's my problem. If that's what the board wants to --
That has been the practice.
We can certainly provide that then. Okay, so with that out of the way, have you had a chance to review the township's zoning ordinance master plan and everything related there, too?
That is correct. What I found is this site is actually located in commercial zone, the C-zone, which does not permit residential units in the zone. But we feel that this is principally suited for this type of development, given the fact that we have the existing off-street parking. We're not going to be exasperating any on-shim parking, and thereby we have the ability to satisfy and address any off-street parking for the development itself. The fact that we have adjacent residential uses directly next to us, we feel that this does not impair the zoning code to allow for an extension thereof, and the fact you already have two residential units on the property. Mr. Ali has suggested or designated that the lot itself has been difficult to lease out for commercial, and that's why he wants to go down this route, because it feels as being underutilized and so forth. One last thing I would like to suggest is that in 2019, you did a redevelopment study plan, which identified as being not fully utilized, so this is one way that we can start utilizing the property to maintain the use of the property, you know, make it more beneficial to the property. Sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKenna. So in summary, you think that the use variance can be justified under the positive and negative criteria?
I do. Yes, the positive would be the fact that we're extending and utilizing the property. The negative fact is that we are not impaired in the zoning code because we're just extending the existing residential development to the rear of us, and thereby we are just in more character with the adjacent uses of the property.
Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions from Mr. McKenna at this time, and he is my last witness.
Just a few questions in regards to the lighting. So how is that going to be documented?
We can submit --
Instead of doing a lighting plan, which I hate for you to do?
I know.
Would you just do a nighttime light meter? It's still a daylight saving stock as an A.I., you could go right after work. All right, so if you just do a nighttime survey?
Sure.
Mr. Ali can have all the light bulbs and everything else on there, but you just provide it point by point with certification that provides adequate light for the residential use. That would be on for the whole lighting analysis.
That's fine.
So I got a couple for you. So you're telling me right now you have two units, two bedrooms each?
Yes.
So that part is the right side of the property, because you're standing in the middle of 10th Avenue?
Yes.
All right, so is that -- I couldn't see it because I was driving by, I took my time, but is that a Cape Cod? Is there a second level?
It's one and a half story.
One and a half story?
Yeah.
All right, so how is that divided up? Two bed -- you said --
So one of the comments in the review letter was to provide floor plans. We did submit a rudimentary one with the application. It wasn't a formal architectural floor plan, just because, to be honest, as a resident, it's a lot to expend the cost for the architectural floor plan. We don't know it's approved. But I mean, I could have Mr. Ali speak to it a little more if you --
Yeah, so my question is, I'm walking in the --
Have you ever forgotten this?
I never go.
It was like a one-page, it wasn't like a full-size plan.
No, I'm just trying to get an insight on. So when I walk through the front door, is there access to an upstairs unit, or is it up and down for both?
In the back. In the back, with that.
If you go in, but how do you access the back unit? Is there --
We access in the back.
There's a door in the rear of the building?
So nobody goes in the front?
Nobody goes in the front, yeah.
Okay. But what's -- so what's with the door there?
I'm sorry, let me -- so one, the units will be accessed by the front door?
Yes.
And then there's going to be two doors in the rear of the property?
There's going to be two doors, one for the basement downstairs, and then 3rd Avenue will be the entrance for the new, for the commercial unit.
For the new one you're --
Yes.
You're applying for. That's the one with like the sunroom?
Yes.
Now, is that going to stay the sunroom, or are you framing that all out?
I'm trying to frame it out because I can't -- because I want to replace this glass, it's all broken.
Right.
And nobody actually worked on this glass anymore. So of course we have --
I was going to say, it's been there all --
Minimum, just replace the glass.
Okay.
And there's no guarantee anybody will rent that place.
I have a photo array that I can pass out as an exhibit, I just want to confirm one second. So will this be for one of the entrances?
Yeah, this will be the --
And this will be?
That will be the new one, the commercial. And this is for the back one.
Okay, if I could pass these out, or hand them over to you to pass them out? There should be enough copies there. I'm passing around, it's just two pages of four photos. I'm really just looking at the front, at the first page. When you look at the first page, the top photo, you will see two doors. That's actually the, what we'll consider the rear of the property. One of those doors will be to the rear unit that exists.
Yeah, I'm going to split it, I'll just get the picture from the --
Shannon.
Okay, so --
Okay, that helps.
The top photo, the white door, Mr. Ali, the white door here?
That will be the access to the basement downstairs.
So that will be the exterior access to the basement of the unit?
So the only one's going to use that as per yours?
Be the new apartment.
The new apartment.
Yes.
Okay.
The second door in that top photo, that is to the rear existing unit?
Yes.
Now, going down to the bottom photo, the screened-in area with the door, that is to the existing front apartment? And the door next to it is to the new unit?
Yes, we're going to change the door to residential, commercial.
And you asked the half-story, is that a half-story?
The half-story, which unit? One of the existing units has a half-story?
The existing front one, right there.
The existing front dwelling unit has access to the half-story?
Which one was that? The one with the --
The one with the porch, or like the screened-in area?
The screen, okay.
Yeah.
So they have the half-story.
Yeah.
So they go up, and so they're two bedrooms, kitchen, small kitchen, living room there?
Yes, and the more half is the attic, it's just a --
Like a hall, please.
And that will serve the difference.
No, I understand that, but so maybe, no, I'm getting it, I didn't. But you're, so the upstairs, not that I'm trying to be redundant, but the upstairs, when that first guy walks in from the front of the house, he walks upstairs, is he living up there at all? Is there bedrooms up there, or?
No, it's an open loft area.
It's just open loft?
Open loft, that's it.
Is it heated and finished?
Yes, it will be heated and finished.
Okay.
And the stairs are interior to that one apartment? So it's not --
Yeah, but they're using -- I'm just trying to, you're not that upstairs is, that's not where they're sleeping, nobody's sleeping?
No, no.
Okay. Yeah, so the two-bedroom units are both on the first floor, and then the other third one's top. Okay. All right. Was there something else I had over here? No, I, no, he owns that, yeah. So that's good. And they're going to take care of that and then fix the fence, all right? No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Ali, the entire fence is coming down, sir?
Yeah, I have to work with the neighbor, because this is not my fence, it's the neighbor's. So if it's after damage, you want to --
I think we're, I do believe part of it's approaching on the property, to the extent it's on our property, it's being replaced.
Okay.
Okay, so that wood fence is coming down, and we're going to replace that with vinyl fence, is that correct?
Yes.
Through this survey that was submitted, the wood fence is on your property?
Yes.
The neighbor's property is a chamber.
The neighbor's the chamber, so yeah, the wood being, to the extent, anything else?
And that's all we enjoy.
Care about.
Would fence either repaired or replaced?
Yep, that'll be replaced with vinyl.
I have a little material for it.
Other question for Mr. Ali?
Not good.
There'll be no sleeping cords in the basement, correct?
Correct, and I believe we say that in the --
And you can make sure that's in the resolution.
According to --
I have a question. How many latars were servicing the facility? You said it was, you said that the electrical was all separate. You said one sewer lateral servicing all three apartments?
I noticed another question.
I don't know if we have that on hand. I believe it's one. We were speaking electric and so forth, we're separately metered.
Okay, so we're servicing three apartments with one sewer lateral. So you're only getting filled one time for the town, is that correct?
No.
No, they get, they get -- So they --
They will be filled for three, okay. Because I know we had this problem years ago.
When they give their plumbing and their inspection?
Okay.
There will be two residential units, a commercial will be converted to three residential units.
Okay, so they'll, so --
Yeah, and Mr. Ali, just to clarify, because I don't know if they heard you, you do receive two residential bills currently, correct?
Okay, good, that's what I wanted, so you'll get three residential, okay.
Hey, Mr. Ali, what did we, what did we say when we're doing about the trash? We're going to put a trash enclosure that's going to house, you know, two cans apiece for each unit, or what's transpiring there?
Yeah, it testified up, we're going to provide a fenced-in trash enclosure area to screen from the roadway.
And Mr. McKenna will have to provide the detail of how he's putting that together with fencing. And Mr. McKenna can bring it up to me, we have a good example of a nice little presidential. It just might be, I'll just say right now, it's a, it could be a long fenced enclosure with multiple gates. Make it that way, gate for one set, gate for the second set, gate for the third set, and that seems also --
If I may, I believe that the commercial unit actually has one to side here, so they just rolled that out.
I didn't see that on the plan.
It wasn't on the plan, but I --
Go provide that, that's right.
Yeah, that's my problem.
Are there any other questions?
I'm looking at one of the photographs supplied by Mr. Box, the trash and stuff, going to clean all that up and everything?
Yes, yes.
And signs laying down and stuff.
Yeah, the entire sign structure's coming off. We're really trying to clean up the property, hence the fencing and everything else.
Do you have a rendering of what the form of the building's going to look like when you're done with it? When you go to that glass?
The glass is staying, correct, Mr. Ali?
The front, the windows when they come out.
Okay, sorry.
I'm going to have an artifact, actually, before I start anything, I'm going to ask you guys.
We can provide that as a condition of approval if you want it before --
I just knew it was such a curious question.
Well, Mr. Ali, it will match, it will match the remainder of the building, correct?
You know, my history was down here in Burlington and I have different problems. I take on a lot of my work. As you see, this property, I did update a lot of things in this property already. It actually looked nice, as Black Forest Pike, and I promise you, I'll make something nice. Because my place will be everywhere.
So can we say just for the testimony that whatever renovations that is performed will be done by the, so it'll be done through building permits, through the building department? But it would, any renovations would be generally consistent with the quality of the existing building?
Yes.
And I think that that would be acceptable.
That's fine.
You take no objections, Mark.
I know Sarah said that you folks have agreed to all of the bullet points in Mr. Box's review letter of February 19th, but that being said, are there any questions for our professionals, or for any of the witnesses before we take a vote? At this point in time, we're going to open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application, and this application only, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and address the board.
So you have no one from the public wishing to speak at this time? I think a motion to close the public's portion.
Say.
Motion, Mr. Arkley, second, Mr. Rinselli, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes, this is an application for property located at 30 East 10th Avenue at the corner of 1000 South Black Forest Pike, which property lies within our commercial zone district. We've heard testimony that the current use of the property is mixed in nature with two apartments and one commercial use. The applicant is applying for a use variance to convert the commercial unit into a residential. You've heard the testimony of their engineer, Mr. McKenna, who made his argument regarding the appropriateness of such a variance being granted because of the nature of the surrounding properties, and because the fact is, it's two-thirds of the building is already being used as residential. But with any use of variance, we, the board has the opportunity to attach conditions to any approval. It appears that the conditions that the board has discussed and would want to make part of this application would be as follows. The applicant will repair, well, not repair, will replace the existing wooden fence with a vinyl fence. Regarding trash, the applicant will install a trash enclosure to be designated for the use of the residential tenants, and will provide our engineer with detail of that structure and as for the suggestions of Mr. Box. The applicant will also provide a floor plan, although we don't need architectural plans, it'll be a floor plan that Mr. Box can review and generally be kept in the file to see exactly how these units are going to be laid out. The applicant is also going to provide a total of seven parking spaces. They are going to be striped as per Mr. Box's letter, and there will be proof that ADA compliance will exist at the, at the site. Another condition is, and was represented, that the new commercial unit will be the sole unit -- unit owner that has access to the basement. As a condition, the basement will not be used or converted into another apartment, nor will be used for living space.
And that's residential unit?
And that's, that's the residential unit. Um, let's see, okay, maybe, uh, they agreed to comply with the review comments set forth in Mr. Box's review letter dated February 19, 2025. Um, see, the applicant has, another condition will remove the existing commercial sign. Um, the applicant will also provide a, not a formal lighting plan, but a lighting.
Lighting survey.
Lighting, lighting survey, which we've presented to Mr. Box for his review and approval. Any improvements made to the property, uh, the applicant has testified, uh, will be made, um, in a reasonable work with light fashion. He's indicating that he's owned other trusts, he's in the area, and he takes pride in appearance of his properties, and the board is just requesting that that be evidenced with any improvements that he does at this time. I believe, Steve, I.
I think you hit them all.
I hit them all, the board, if you're satisfied.
One man is one, the application is also for site plan waiver. So the plan that is going to be provided by Ms. McKenna, Ms. McKenna, this view, would be called a record plan? Because it is going to be a site plan waiver that's being, uh, acted on this evening. So any of the details would be supplied on our record plan as per this application.
A record plan. And not a formal site. Um, again, if you, the board feels that the, they've proven the positive and negative criteria for these variances, the, uh, the board can recommend and act as according, so we would need a motion.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of application 25-01, please.
Can I ask one quick question before we do that?
No.
No?
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Arkley, Millie, have a call, please.
Ms. Cleaver?
Yes.
Mr. Arkley?
Yes.
Ms. Gutchen?
Yes.
Mr. Buckeye?
Yes.
Mr. Benali?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
All right, good luck, folks, thank you very much for your time this evening.
I do.
Sorry, guys, can't do it.
Thank you so much.
Folks, just sit probably one second, uh, there, and councilmen have to choose themselves for this variance, so we're going to call them back into chambers. Okay?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, is this application coming to our common, are you any final?
Oh.
Did we lose our channels? I'm saying hello. It's a small world, you know that, right? That application go well?
Fire marshals report you, okay.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, folks, thank you for your patience, uh, next order of business would be application 25-07, Mr. Rowan?
Yes, now come on up. This is an application for the La Quinta Parking, uh, conversion for, uh, the La Quinta site on 109 Ninth Avenue, block 135, lot 32, which property lies within our, uh, special economic zoning district. And redevelopment area.
Thank you, councillor, Madam Chair, members of the board, Neil O'Brien, for the record, from the law firm, Barter and Greiner, for the applicant L2L, Rutherford Urban Renewal LLC. Now, councillor, I've got two witnesses, see if you'd like to.
gentlemen, would you raise your right hand, you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give this board this evening is truth for all night, because it best be known.
Right here. Thank you.
So this is a four-and-a-half acres, uh, street address 109 Ninth, Ninth Avenue, uh, block 135, lot 32. Um, location of the closed, in, in suites. Uh, this property is, all of you probably know, has a fairly, um, long history, in recent years it was closed, I think around, uh, 1917. Um, I think it was for sale for quite a few years before that. Uh, this is actually my third attempt to help the client develop this property and use this property again, and this building again. The first, I'll report you details, was for a CCRC, two-wheel care, fraternal community, never got off the ground. Second, uh, much more recently, last year, you may remember, there was a designated redevelopment for this, uh, property in conceptual plans that are similar to the ones we have here. Um, that redeveloper decided ultimately not to proceed, so here we are hoping, um, from my perspective, and certainly from a client's perspective, that there is a charm here, and that we'll push this over the finish line tonight, and get this property redeveloped for a beneficial reuse. The property, as the councillor said, is subject to a redevelopment plan, and which provides zoning criteria for this specific property, allowing conversion of the building to residential multifamily use apartments, both one and two-bedroom, and efficiency apartments. And purpose, of course, of redevelopment is when a property is a bit stubborn to be redeveloped. The municipality gives it a little bit of help to, to help it be redeveloped, redeveloper steps forward, takes on the job, tries to make it work, and tries to bring the project to fruition. So, in that spirit, as you'll hear tonight, there are a couple of provisions of the redevelopment plan, which were asking your assistance, and been granting us waivers or variances from, and we'll describe those in a little bit more detail. But, got some brief testimony for you tonight, including, uh, representative from the applicant, Sam DeFrank, who is the executive vice president and chief investment officer. Sam, if I could ask you, just step forward and describe, uh, who your organization is, what you guys do, and then let's, uh, focus on this property.
Sure, sure. Good evening, thanks, everyone, I know it's, uh, end of, end of day, so thanks for taking your extra time. Uh, Saul Urban, uh, we're, we're out of the Washington DC area. Uh, our, our fund, uh, was formed, uh, four years ago, with the specific purpose of adaptive reuse, uh, acquiring hotels that had, uh, fallen into disrepair or failed, and converting those to housing, because there's a housing crisis nationwide. Uh, to date, we have acquired seven properties located around the US. Our first property, which we acquired a year and a half ago, uh, in Roanoke, Virginia, was a hundred and eighty-eight, uh, guest room, three-story digs in, that we acquired, gutted, uh, converted, and reconfigured all the rooms to create eighty-eight full-size market rate apartments, and delivered that in twelve months, and stabilized that as of the end of 2024. Uh, we also have a project in Trenton, New Jersey, which, uh, we just got site plan approval for. Uh, it's a sixteen-story former Holiday Inn located downtown, uh, that will commence construction here in a couple of months. Uh, there's other projects around the country, in places like Cincinnati, Ohio, Detroit, Michigan, St. Louis, Missouri, where we're doing the same thing. And so, when this opportunity came, I guess, four years ago was the first time we saw it. Um, it went to an auction, and the auction didn't, uh, it didn't close, and I guess the owner at that time decided to work with you to try to redevelop it. Uh, about a year and a half ago, uh, I guess it was that developer who couldn't, uh, perform, or decided not to perform. So we bought the property from, from them, and, uh, we spent the last, uh, going on fourteen months now, trying to get our plans finalized to, to everyone's satisfaction, so we could present tonight and hopefully get board approval.
So what's your concept out here, what, what are you, what, what's your concept with respect to this building?
Yeah, so this is, this is, um, pretty straightforward, um, in this case, the building geometry, the way it works is, you know, you have to have geometry that works, a lot of office buildings are too deep, you can't, you can't put an apartment along the walls and get enough light in the middle, the, the hotel geometry works rather well, where you can take two guest rooms, and you can combine them, and you make one guest room, uh, the living room, and, uh, you take the bathroom and turn that into, all the plumbing here, re, re, reconfigured to become a kitchen, and then, just like when you stayed in a hotel, and there's an adjoining door, you know, conceptually, it's the same thing. You can walk to the other room, and that becomes a bedroom, and you leave that bathroom intact, and so you end up with a one bedroom, uh, one bathroom, all new apartment. So, in this case, you know, these will be all brand-new apartments, uh, you know, the, the property is in pretty poor condition right now, everything's been stripped out of it, uh, all the electrical wiring, all plumbing, um, the, uh, all the mechanicals for the elevators have been stripped out. So it's, it's pretty good, the, the roof on the lower level had to be done, all the exterior in the back is all, uh, torn up. So, so there's a lot of work that has gone into just kind of getting it to, to a condition that we can redo the interior and create the apartments that I, I have described. And so we'll end up with a hundred and twelve apartments, uh, the, the mix of studios, six studios, ninety-one one-beds, and twelve two-bed apartments. Uh, and that's on all seven levels. Uh, on the first level, we'll have a media room, we'll have a fitness center, we'll have a pet wash, we'll have storage, um, and then out back, we have the, uh, outdoor, uh, community area as well as a golf ball.
Sorry, we're, we're asking for a couple of deviations from some of those indoor amenities to the minimum square foot size. From your experience, um, nationally with your other projects, are the areas that we're proposing sufficient?
For, for marker building, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, so, actually, for a hundred and twelve apartments, we're providing more amenities than most communities provide for that side of the.
Do you have a likely demographic tenant, do you have a target tenant?
Well, uh, generally how it works is the studios and the one-bedrooms tend to attract, uh, young singles and, and young couples. Uh, in this case, the two-bedrooms will, will attract either roommate format or, or young families.
So what are some of the obstacles you've, um, you've encountered here as you've tried to bring this project to the finish line?
Well, I, you know, the, the, the big thing that has occurred is just, just, you know, there's a lot of needs here in the community that we hadn't anticipated, which is fine, that's, that's what the process is, to try to bring everybody together to make sure we, we build the product that you want. But I don't think we had anticipated, um, as, as heavy an exterior effort as, as was necessary, and costs have gone up pretty, pretty significantly. And the process that we, we originally thought would be done last summer has taken until now, and time costs money, so costs have been going up on us. And, and, and then, you know, even as, as recent as today, the fire marshal has some requests that, you know, add, you know, only to six figures in additional costs. So, th- these obstacles keep hitting us, and, you know, we are trying to overcome them and why deliver this community. It's, it's the right execution for this building, for this community, but, you know, we're, we're yet to the point where it, where it may be coming.
So, nonetheless, you tried with your professionals to develop a project that meets as nearly as possible the requirements of, not just the redevelopment plan, but the external borrower requirements itself, that typically come along with the land use application. You're about right at the finish line, but you can't get stretched too much further?
That, that is correct.
Okay, and any questions?
Before we go, I just want to give you a good visual, these are going to be brand-new apartments, they're going to have all new, you know, interiors. When you walk in, when you come up, it's going to feel like a new beginning, so that's first. So, you know, kitchens with, you know, uh, brush stations, new appliances, dishwasher, microwave, refrigerator, range, washer and dryer in the unit, uh, these, I think, uh, it's, I think we'll program for LVT in these units, and I don't call them any carpeted bedrooms, but that's a market, and marketing can tell people which way to go on that, and costs is kind of different. But the point really is, end of the day, you're going to have a brand-new community, and, and I want to have a size that people will view this as a brand new product.
And LVT for whatever its benefit is?
Uh, normally.
How about square footage, on the unit?
Uh, the studios are four sixty-five.
Four six, four sixteen, I can type that right here. Yeah, one bedroom is like six twenty to six thirty-five, the studio apartments I see are like four sixteen, and then the two bedrooms are fourteen hundred square.
Wow.
Fourteen hundred? Yep. So along those lines, your floor plans are not quite one-hundred percent?
Yeah, so, so we run into, we run into, um, uh, our structural engineers advise us that the, um, the property was built on, for what they can tell, in crushed stone, uh, under clay. And as a result, some of the areas that we have, uh, that we designed specifically on the ground floor, in the confidence area, where they have load-bearing, uh, walls, that we thought we could bridge and take out, um, we might have to move some of those walls a little bit. I don't think it's, it's not going to change unit count, it might take a two-bedroom and turn it into a one-bedroom, but I'm just, I'm just not going to know until we get in, until we start working it out, that's one of the things that comes with renovations.
But would you say that the architectures that you provided are representative of what, what is being asked for under this land use application?
Yeah, so, 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 you know.
Might change slightly, when they go to final building designs, go to building apartments, but the representative, that's all we can.
Hi, Sam, uh, thank you for coming in this evening, um, you made, you made reference, good, good.
Yeah, just, it's Samuel Frank?
Uh, no, Sam.
Sam, just Sam? D, D Frank?
D Frank, capital D, uh.
Oh, D Frank, okay.
Especially Salable.
So Sam, earlier in your testimony, you made reference to, uh, the letter, uh, So Sam, earlier in your testimony, you made reference to the letter that you received from Michael Kearney, our, our captain of our fire and our fire official. What are your feelings toward him? It was a two-page letter. I know it has quite a few bullet points to it. What are your feelings on being able to, you know, execute everything that he has concerns of?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we're absolutely.
We, we need, we will be asking for some clarification on the first two points, just for precisely what is being, is being asked for, what goes on by the fire official, is that correct, Sam?
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
And if I may, this is more for the benefit of the board.
Yes.
The fire official is really an outside agency approval.
Yes.
Which is listed, so it would be up to the applicant to obtain that outside agency approval.
Yep.
So we hear this evening that they're going to be working directly with the fire official, getting the clarification they need, but it does sound like they're willing to, what are you willing to address in that regard? Or do you want to just wait for clarification?
To be, to be fair, I was in my car driving up here, and Neil read it today.
It's actually, it's actually three pages. I apologize. I said two, it's three.
I understand, Neil and everyone else, I understand your ask, and, and yes, we, we can, we can.
There we go. And that's all we need to deal with here. Again, this is like a simple letter from the campaign board, or receiving a letter from campaign or validation service, but we appreciate you putting stuff that's working on.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions for Mr. DeFrank, where he sits down, from the board?
I don't know what the name is. I want to know what the name's going to be. I've been harassing you for a year.
Rodney Gardens.
Studios, 6 studios, 91 one-bed, 12 two-bed. Don't we get it on the rendering here? We're going with the heights of 90.
Is that what you're coming up with? Okay. Oh, it's your decision.
I guess it's going.
We just want to be able to explain it to people.
They're not going to call it after me. I just know it's going that way.
Height, okay.
Mr. Ritchie, you have been sworn, you have testified before this board before, is that correct?
I don't know. All right, if I had, it was a long time ago, so.
Give me, give me your full name for the question.
Rod.
Rod.
R-O-D-M-A-N.
Okay.
Ritchie. R-I-T-C-H-I-E.
Oh, boy, I'd kill that.
And Mr. Ritchie, you're going to be testifying as an engineer this evening?
Professional engineer and professional plan.
Okay. Licensees still standing, since I saw it the last time, a month ago. I'm very familiar with Mr. Ritchie's well-paged, I have no objection.
I have no objection.
An expert engineer and a player.
Very good.
So, counselor, we have an elevation, it's going to be a part of the package we have presented to the board, it's the front elevation. We could label that page one, and Mr. Ritchie, I think he'll be referring to an overlay aerial site plan, which is not part of the package that was submitted to you, which if we can, we will label page two.
What's that due to?
The A2.
Sheet two.
Oh, sorry, is sheet two the sort of site plan? It's an aerial, an aerial.
A2 is an aerial?
Okay. Do we need to mark the exhibits as a later part of the application or else?
If they're part of the application, no, these, these have already been submitted?
Yeah, there is one, this is what you were referring to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that, Rob.
Yeah.
I do want to mark another exhibit, so everyone will do it when we get to it.
Yeah.
Let's do, let's do it like that.
So this is just a colored rendered version of the site plan that was submitted.
So if you marked that as a A1?
This is a color version.
What's that, just a?
Site plan sheet?
Site plan sheet.
Am I reading that right?
Well, this is, this is a site plan rendering, so we could be able to cheap.
Well, why don't we just call it site plan rendering?
Yes.
Take it easy. So Rod, if you could orient the board to this site, I mean, I'm sure it's quite familiar, but.
Yes.
So again, just quickly orient the board to the property. This is the 109th Avenue, it's the turnpike to the north, and existing commercial industrial properties to the east and south, and existing Days Inn to just to the, to the west of the property.
And to the rear of the property, there's an existing fence there along the turnpike. Are there weapons there?
No weapons, no sweat hazard areas.
Okay. So the existing condition on the site, just describe to the board, what's, what's out there, and then we'll move on to what we're doing.
Exactly. So as you're familiar, this is the, it's an abandoned hotel building at the moment. It was formerly the Arquinta Hotel. And there are currently 219 parking spaces with two, I'm sorry, three access drop-ins onto Ninth Ave, current.
There was a swimming pool out there, right? And there's a swimming pool in the rear, which will there fill?
Yep, exactly.
Now, there's a big sign right on front, it's kind of like a mushroom, right?
There is.
We can get to that in a second.
Okay.
So what are the proposed improvements here?
Okay, so this is where I'd like to refer to exhibit A1, which is the colored rendered version of the site plan that was submitted, which is easier to see, some of these features. We're proposing to retain all of the existing parking spaces. The proposed, the applicant intends to mill and overlay the existing parking lot, re-strike those existing spaces, improve the curb. There are four curb items within that parking lot, going to restore those items, include some landscaping. And just walking around the site here to describe the improvements, there's a proposed sidewalk along Ninth Ave. We're proposing fencing along the entire perimeter. The, along the eastern side, we're proposing a four-foot-high decorative aluminum fence for a certain distance.
Do you want to point out approximately where that will stop and where it will be?
So on the eastern side, that decorative fence will extend about 65 feet along the eastern property line.
And what about at the other side?
And then on the other side, it will extend about 100 feet.
Okay.
And the idea is that that decorative aluminum fence will extend at least past the front of the building, and then the remainder of the perimeter will be a four-foot-high go-to-jamming fence.
And that's the first waiver or variance that we're asking for, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Ritchie, while we're, while we're on this page, in regards to the sidewalk on Ninth Avenue, we had an application in from Days Inn to put a third floor on. Is your sidewalk going to extend to the point where it's a continuation of the sidewalk that they have proposed?
I get into that, they're going to go property line, property.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
How will trash be handled, your bud?
So there would be an internal trash room with a trash chute for access to the upper floors, and that trash room will hold the trash containers that will be picked up periodically by a private trash hauler immediately adjacent to this trash room. So a trash truck will pull up to the curb, load the trash, and then pull off the site.
So no issues with external dumpster, raccoons, bugs, smells?
No enclosures.
And that could be noted in the resolution that there is not going to be any exterior dumpsters?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, that's our.
That's the idea, just, just for the future.
So that's it, that would be a condition, no exterior?
No exterior dumpsters, because we're not providing trash.
That's right.
Now, in terms of landscaping, what's, what's proposed?
So we're proposing a robust landscaping plan here with over 130 new plants, to be specific, five shade trees, two ornamental trees, nine evergreen trees, 98, 98 evergreen shrubs, 19 deciduous shrubs, and then many more additional decorative ground cover perennials and ornamental grasses throughout the, the property. Landscaping will be along the front to spruce that up. There'll be some landscaping around, a sign that we'll talk about in a minute. Specifically, there will be evergreen shrubs in front of these parking spaces that face Ninth Street. And then we've also got two rows of evergreen trees back here to serve as a buffer from this single residential property in the rear.
That brings us to another waiver or variance that we're asking for with respect to landscaping on site property lines.
That's correct, yes. We're not proposing any landscaping along either side property line.
And a question for you on bullet point number four of Mr. Box's review letter. It states that the applicant proposed not to provide buffering along all property lines, they understand, not to provide an irrigation system where buffering is required and the irrigation system is required. You don't, you don't want to put an irrigation system in?
That's right. We're proposing hardy native species, and we, there will be hand water during the establishment period to ensure that these plants survive, but we didn't want to, we didn't feel a permanent irrigation system was necessary.
And they'll also have the typical two-year guarantee, right?
That's right.
Now, stormwater, does stormwater need to be addressed here?
Not applicable here. Houses meet the rules for a major development project, as defined in seven bullet points.
How, how is stormwater charged again? How's drainage charged?
So there, there are some existing inlets that discharge to Ninth Avenue, but overall, we're proposing to reduce the amount of impervious cover on the property, and therefore, we will be meeting the intent of those, of the stormwater rules and not increasing stormwater discharges off the property.
Your firm prepared a short form traffic report. Anything to note in that traffic report that the board should know?
No. We did some analysis and comparison from this use to the previous hotel use, and we're actually seeing a decrease in trips, anticipated trips, and we've submitted that report, and our engineers have submitted that report. And we believe it's, it's an insignificant impact on, on traffic.
Now, but there will be some outdoor amenities here, right? Do you want the board to know some less proposed?
Yeah, so in the rear of the building, as we described earlier, there, there was a pool. That pool is going to be filled in, concrete broken up, and that area will be restored. And then a, an outdoor seating area is proposed with a grass lawn area and an adjacent fenced-in dog park for the residents to enjoy the outdoors.
So Rod, we're asking for four waivers or variances here from redevelopment plan. Can you provide the justification for those requests?
Yes.
Sorry, is there anything else you wanted to touch on the site plan first?
I just did want to mention that the lighting, we are not proposing to change the existing lighting. We prepared a lighting plan that basically resembles, or most closely resembles, the existing lighting that's on site. There were a couple of comments about the, the lighting plan. We, we can certainly install some shields, but I don't believe the existing lighting is anywhere near 4,000 kelons, so that shouldn't be an issue either.
Okay. And let's talk about the sign before we move on to the next.
Yes, yes. So we are proposing a monument sign out front in the same location that the existing sign is located. It's just going to be different. It's not going to be quite as massive as you go to the next.
What's the size of the existing sign, Paul Park?
I, I just want to come back to lighting.
Sure.
So the lighting on the lighting plan that we have as part of the submission is, what I understand, new lighting. I don't believe that's representative of the lighting that's out there.
We, so there's, there's a note on there that says we basically prepared that chart, which is our best guess at what that lighting is out there based on pictures and visuals. And so we prepared that in order to demonstrate adequate lighting, and that our lighting meets the requirements.
So my understanding of this note says, existing light poles shall remain and fixtures shall be replaced or relamed in accordance with the proposed luminary schedule. So I understand the poles are staying, but it was our understanding that you were going to keep the poles, which we understand.
Yeah.
But you were going to re-head the lighting fixtures in accordance with what you submit to provide the lighting levels as you provided on your submission. That's, that's how this is represented.
Okay. That's fine. My, my apologies for the confusion.
Yeah, so we don't need to have to change lights to full locations.
We were, we were going back and forth on this, and so if, if that's what was submitted.
Yeah, what you submitted is. Swap out the fixtures. Down, and, and just for the record, and as a solicitor, downward row, and then shielded.
No problem with that, no problem. And we can make sure the new fixtures are less than 4,000. I just.
Yes, thank you.
So you have to disagree with your one and two on page six?
Yes.
Or you're not, yes.
Okay.
Right.
So by you. And. So we don't have to say that the existing light heads are going to be, you don't have to deal with that now. Okay.
I have a handout. You want to pass that around? That's just a picture, it's a Google shot of that existing sign that's out there.
So it's like a big mushroom, right? You've got the stem, and you've got the head of the mushroom.
And I, we did a survey that sign, but if I had to guess, I'd say that's upward of 15, closer to maybe 20 feet tall, and, you know, the head of that sign is too huge. So for the board, if they're looking at the stem, that's basically what we're replacing here.
That's right.
Well, whether it's, and it's on the rendering, do, do we have to?
It's about 20, it's about 25 feet tall.
Yeah, I mean, I was just trying to be conservatively low.
Eight by, eight by 16, hey.
Because what we're proposing is a sign that has varying heights from the front and the back, 12 and a half feet high in the front and 14 feet on the back, and a few pieces of times, pass those out. That's another exhibit. This is a sign.
This has not previously been submitted.
It was not submitted, this is brand-new information, so that should be included.
So same location, using the existing foundation, existing height, right?
Exactly, plan to reuse the existing foundation.
It's a big sign.
But, but it sounds like it won't be the size that it is now.
But you don't need a variance, right?
It's smaller than what it is.
First, first, let's talk about the sign, and if no one has an objection to the sign, and that's what we're hearing here, then I would ask for, when we're looking to consider this, that any variance that would be required for the sign, according to bulk standards, be, be approved as part of the application.
Well, no, no agreement, whatever signs there is going to conform the word. So.
It's bigger.
We can actually tell.
You have a vote in form, Steve, but if you have that right, I'm sorry. I agree with that, right? Now, just trying to.
The ordinance requires a maximum height of 6 feet. And the existing sign clearly achieves that.
25.
And we're proposing something less than what's there now, but more than what's permitted by the ordinance, therefore, we're requesting assigned height variance.
Of?
Well, for 14, for a proposed height of 14, where 6 is required, 8 feet.
And how about area?
Your, your detail says 14 feet, so you're asking for 14 feet.
Oh, 8 feet, that's what I'm saying, 8 feet.
You know, variance allow for a sign height of 14 feet?
Yes.
Sign height, 14 feet, where?
Area.
Six feet or four?
Okay.
Sign area, we comply. The requirement is 20 square feet, and the area of our sign itself, not the support structure, but the sign itself is approximately 10 feet.
And last, the.
What is, what are considered as support structure?
Well, the support structure is.
Do you have to join the monumental side?
Yeah.
You mean all of this?
Yes, all of that. So the sign itself, that just is a lettering, is about 15 square feet.
The interpretation, and I have no objection to the variance, just want to point this out, and I just want to make sure we have clean approvals. So I would ask to get approval for a lettered area of.
Approximately 15 square feet.
Lettered area of 15 square feet.
Can I, I'm a sign guy, I hate to say this.
And then also.
That area is too small. If you look at the size of at Gateway Park, it's two inches high.
I have no, I have no objection, I have no objection, Mr. Rich.
Well, it says heights, but this is rendering. I would say, once again.
We give you a sign.
If you're looking at the existing sign, which is eight foot high, this is 12 foot wide, 14 foot wide, it's 100, you know, over 100 square feet. I think we should give them at least 40 or 50 square feet, which what our ordinance would be a commercial district. I think we're treating them differently. This is a massive building. My argument when I go in front of planning boards all the time is it should be proportional to the size of the property. I think the sign looks great, I just think you ought to be careful that the letter heights are too small. So, 10 square feet is not big enough. I would say, you know, why don't we just approve, if everyone likes the shade, right? What I'm saying, it's 14 feet by.
And it goes smaller, you go smaller.
What you're width, your width is, your width 6. 6 by 14, we should allow that with no contingencies of the size of the letters, because you don't want to have letters that no one's going to read. Then it's not going to be functional.
So, a sign 14 feet in height.
Maximum height 14 feet and a square footage of whatever 6 times 14 is, 60, 84 square feet.
Square footage.
Of 84 square.
Yeah, and we're combining everything with, you're not distinguishing between the.
The whole thing should be treated as a sign.
The whole thing is a sign, yeah.
84 square feet.
There's one more, Steve, sorry. This existing sign setback from is 10 feet. How far is it back to 5 and a half?
It's a variance.
Yeah, we're just listing it. And setback.
Setback from the right end.
10 feet required.
5.5 feet where 10 foot is required.
Property line back here.
5 feet where 10 feet is required.
It's 200.
And it's represented here that it will be externally illuminated.
Yes, this is pre-existing condition.
And it's okay for that on the resolution as well. And I think that's, that's also, so it's going to be externally illuminated sign, which I believe also is in support of the larger size.
I don't think we should leave that condition in there, it should be either of what they want. Once again, I'm sorry, 14 feet high is too high to have a floodlight shining up. It may want to be illuminated. Why are we treating this, it's in a commercial zone. We've kind of made it residential, but this is a seven-story building. I think it's nice looking. I think that's the point. Is it nice looking?
Yeah.
If that's the basic rendering on it. I'm sorry, I, you have the wrong guy on the board here.
They're asking for approvals based on that, so.
I don't think the illumination makes a difference. It's up to that.
Then I would just want it on the record that it could be internally or externally ground lit, either one, either one. Okay. I just want to make sure we're describing the resolution, what you're providing here in this exhibit. What's part of the resolution? And what is Gateway Park?
It's another property, I guess.
Okay.
They're using an old draw.
All right. So, it's not going to say that.
It's okay. We appreciate that you did.
The heights.
Unless it's a protest here.
The heights at Runyon. The heights of Runyon, correct.
Keep it simple.
So, there'd be three variants, is that what you're suggesting for the sign?
Height, square footage and.
Steps.
Step.
That's just, that's just three variances on the signage.
Yes.
We have other variances.
No, no, that was just the three variants on the sign.
On the signage, okay, just to be clear.
We're talking about the variants with fencing, okay? And landscaping.
Yeah, I'm good, just to get back with that, I just, I don't really agree with not having an irrigation system where you are going to have, you know, shrubs and things that are going to require water. I mean, I don't know where you live, but, I mean, we've had some awful dry summers around here and I can just see the lawns and things burned up. I mean, I don't think it's that much of an expense to put irrigation in, you know, to keep the property looking nice.
Wasn't there irrigation in the front of that existing building now? In that landscaped area across the whole front? I'm almost positive there exists.
But I also can probably guess that it's not in any condition.
It's in no condition, so.
I mean, if my, if my house in Brigantine, if I didn't have sprints, my lawn would burn up in two weeks. It predicated upon how much rain we get, you know what I mean? It looks like, it looks terrible when that happens. I mean, this is your one opportunity while you're putting this project together to do this and, you know, I think in lieu of, you know, what we're trying to do here, put together a nice looking property, I don't think it's going to add that much expense to have an irrigation system put in there so as to, we're going to be sure that the things aren't going to burn up and look bad.
So, I mean, I think to your point about cost, right? It's, you've heard about the cost of the interior renovations and how significant they are. And so, it's just, when we're looking at the overall project, we're looking at this thing cumulatively and doing whatever we can to minimize expense where we can, where it makes sense. And the idea was hardy native species, in my experience, if they are watered during that establishment period, first year or two, they die fine. And they'll have a warranty, so if they die in that first few years, they'll be replaced.
I'm just going to ask, Ms. Ritchie, cost, as you all know, is not a very strong proof. I'm going to ask Mr. O'Brien to latch on here in terms of proof for a variance in the interest of the land use application. I'm going to ask you to work with that. But the other question is, what about the lawn areas? We understand about native species being able, but I just have to ask about the lawn areas. How is that going to be addressed? And it's only, it's only the lawn area where we have the front and the back that are just a corruption.
In all due respect, I have.
Understand.
Irrigation system costs money. So, proposed work by, by a property, this property isn't a large property with the type of requirement that you typically give it to a non-irrigation system. We need these numbers and so, we're proposing and can't water and can't, we really don't recommend there's a large one. And so, cost is, and issues, whether you all want to account that or not.
Not lacking in knowledge.
Attorney, attorney, in terms of your proofs.
Yeah. I would say, Stephen, in a redevelopment project, cost probably is much more. I agree, but the land use application, cost is the obvious problem, but in the redevelopment context, I think it is a big part of the equation because property hasn't been developed, people are trying to develop, haven't been able to, and here we are, and cost is a factor in pushing that sort of approach. And could I ask you to elaborate a little bit further? This is where I'm trying to get you to kind of bring in that this plan and this landscape package and also with the irrigation has already been approved by the redevelopment entity. So, that's where I was trying to get you to kind of bring that in there. And that does provide some, in terms of justification for the variance. So, I just want to make sure this is part of a redevelopment project, this plan and as being submitted, has just submitted only with the sign this evening, it's already been through the redevelopment entity review and it's the subject of a redevelopment agreement. And that's where financial does come into play and can have an effect on the proofs in terms of the relief. So, I just want to, that's what I was trying to get to.
And it's also in the property owner's interest to have this place looking good when folks come in and say, "Hey, I want to rent a park," because this isn't the only building they'll visit, right? They'll visit other buildings and if they see burn up, trumps, burn up landscaping, they're going to say, "Well, maybe I should rent a park."
And the applicant has provided now on the record that they're going to keep their plantings, whether it's lawn or the actual landscape materials, a lot, so.
And just to be clear, the seating with regard to landscaping is among the property lines. We're seeking relief with redevelopment.
That was the landscaping, again, redevelopment requires irrigation, that's the other relief that you've now provided, I believe, I believe appropriate for a shielded board.
The only other two, just that were, that dealt with the building itself and the internal space, I don't think we reviewed the numbers. We are providing, we're proposing 495 square feet of office space in the building on the ground floor, where a minimum of 700 square feet of office space is required. And we're proposing 1,307, 4 square feet of storage space, a minimum of 2,000 square feet of storage area space.
Correct, and that's noted in our review.
Great.
So, you are providing office space, you are providing storage space just underneath the actual requirements that were in the redevelopment.
That's correct.
And they're asking for the relief for that sheet and floor footage.
I.
And you already discussed the shade trees above, you already discussed about the deck or fence and extents, that the relief is being requested for the remainder perimeter outside of the areas that you already demonstrated. I mean, it's a different type of roof fence.
Yes.
And then the other are just the three side variances that we discussed this evening?
Correct.
Correct.
I think that's it. We're here to answer the questions. We're.
Are there any questions from the board members or for professionals?
Okay, if I may, so we did issue a February 20th, '25 review, which is the last of the review letters. We've been going back and forth for several iterations. There are some items to get in our review letter. Any objections to any of those items?
No.
Right, so you will comply with our February 20th, '25 review.
Yes.
I'm not in the record, I'm not in front of the chair.
Okay, again, are there any questions from the board members or professionals or any of the witnesses?
I'll try to make a question. Or, I know you, you explained that you gutted the building and everything else, but we haven't seen much on the outside with the utilities itself. Did the building have a grease in seater with the previous dining halls and so forth? Because I'm just asking that because if you can answer this to me, we're converting this over from this hotel to now residential, have you had problems with your other developments, your other projects with grease issues from the clientele?
I'm having trouble with what issues?
Grease? Okay.
I mean, clearly, there's a rock around here, there's some grease.
Yeah, but now switching over to all these apartments, I'm just wondering from your other projects, have you had that experience on it?
No, we have, we've had grease experience, but we haven't had problems.
Problem with stuff, so it was able to be handled and so forth that way?
Yeah, yeah, it's all the same. The truth is, much of what gets dirty is done and out, you're not using it. So, if you're down to bare concrete and they're, so most of the stuff that would retain the grease will all be done.
I'm talking about for, for the sanitary line.
Yeah, a grease trap from the kitchen. Yeah. There's no longer a kitchen, a commercial kitchen in there.
Yeah, we generally don't.
Okay, but I was just wondering if there was still an seater on the property that could be utilized or is that out itself? What did you have with your other projects, grease from cooking from all the apartments that are causing problems? Would that be consideration?
Like I said, we scope them.
Right. Okay, but I'm talking about six months after the new people are in, since they're now turned over to apartments, not a hotel unit.
Yeah.
You're adding.
No.
Okay.
No, it's, no, it's the former use that creates the problem, not the new use.
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent.
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite sure.
No, 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 I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Other, one question. Steve, with the fire letter that was put out, so how does that work? Like, who, where do they come, like, to a meeting of the minds between the two?
So, the fire official, you know, whether the fire official in the town or fire marshal, whatever you want to call them, they have jurisdiction per their appointment. They have to work out with the applicant, the applicant has to work out with them in terms of what they agree to, what they don't agree to, and the fire official is required, just like any other entity, to work through that process. And if they disagree, then it's up to the jurisdiction of that official, what they require or not require.
And that's the key word, require versus recommend. I want the board to know there's a difference between require and recommend.
Right.
So, everything on that list was a recommend.
It's recommend, but we, as a board, I just want to point out.
There are guidelines.
There are, there are, there's a letter issue. I don't think we can say, because we did not do an analysis as a board or a professional, whether to require them or recommendation. We would leave that up to the fire official and for the applicant to deal with that. And then, one of the conditions of our approval, of any approval this evening, would be that we have an affirmative approval from the fire officials, just like we need from county and county.
At an outside entity.
And soil confirmation. So, I think it's sort of like outside of our.
That's on our purview here.
As long as we have that approval and we know that our fire official, interpret fire safety, is doing what is necessary. Second step.
You have the fire subcode also, of course, when you come to.
Yes.
And Michael said he had not received a copy of your, of the plan. I'll see to it if he gets these tomorrow.
We will.
So, no, I'll take care of it. I'll make sure that he gets them.
He did get a copy.
And his letter say he did not. I'm just going to be sure he has a conversation with these folks.
Typically, we don't give the fire marshal a copy until after it's been approved. After, easily, no? We're not cluster township, we don't ask everybody to review something prior.
No, I just want to make sure that he, that he has everything he needs to speak to these guys.
No.
With proper application.
We're staying outside the room.
Right, so, yeah, because typically, they would come before this board and then they would make their submissions, just like they would make a submission to the county planning board after they'd received approval here, make a submission to county soil. You'll coordinate that formal process.
And they need soil, county soil for?
They don't need an exemption.
They'll just need an exemption. So, they don't have to pay the $1,250?
It's very simple process.
I had to pay the $1,250.
You had to pay it.
We need for our files as a municipality.
Okay.
We need a look, just like the county's going to, most likely get a letter of no interest.
No interest, yeah, yeah. Are there any other questions from the board members for the applicant or the professionals?
The apartments or rented market? Rent from the.
Yeah.
The apartments with a rented market.
Yeah.
Market rate.
This is one, this is a.
Pet friendly, I saw the door.
Pet friendly, a much more expensive.
No, yeah, this is a 100% market rate apartment complex as submitted.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak, have any questions? At this point, Tom, when I open up this to the public, anyone wishing to speak on this application and this application only, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address and be heard.
So, you know, the public wishes to speak on this matter, I make a motion to close vote, of course.
Mr. O'Callaghan and Ms. Fishman, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before Mr. O'N, please, I just wanted to make it clear that we have a full quorum this evening, so Mr. Masili and Ms. Burke will not be voting on this application tonight. Okay, we have a full quorum of nine, okay? Okay, Mr. O'N, thank you.
Okay, this is an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval for the property located at 109 Ninth Avenue, Block 135, Lot 32, and it's regarding the old Laquinta Inn, and it's for the purpose of converting the old Laquinta into 112, I believe, residential units, which were described by the applicant and which were set forth on his application. The applicant does not need a use variance. He is not asking for any bulk variances, but he is asking for certain waivers and certain sign variances regarding height and square footage and location. The waivers that the applicant is requesting were sent forth in Mr. Rebo's, excuse me, no, Mr. Bot's letter dated in February 20th, 2025, page three, items one through four, which were associated with minimum office space requirement and storage areas, these requirements, fencing and shade tree and buffering, he's asking for waivers. He's asking for waivers on those requirements. And specifically, waiting any additional landscaping or buffering area and irrigation system. He's asking a waiver, and that was discussed. The variances that he is requiring regarding the signage that is located, the site, our ordinance provides a maximum height of 6 feet for any freestanding sign. He is requesting a variance so he can store anything, a sign of 14 feet in height and with a square footage of script at 84 square feet. He also wants to maintain the sign, which is currently 5.5, located 5.5 feet from the designated right of way where our ordinance requires that certain signs be located, no more than 10 feet.
Mrs. Slusser, just so we can handle that as we go, there's no re-script, no restriction in script. It's just every sign area of 84 square feet where 20 is permitted in the zone. So we're not going to, not going to restrict anything to do with lettering or anything else.
No restriction.
Whatever goes on the side goes on.
Okay, but 84 square feet is... The sign will be either internally or externally ground lit.
Internally or externally lit, kind of the answer. I don't look it to my mayor.
The applicant has indicated that he will comply with the review notes contained in the review letter dated February 20th. This is subject, another condition will be there will be no exterior dumpsters permitted at this site. It will be conditioned also of the applicant obtaining any and all other required approvals from state, county, or local agencies, which would require by... I believe...
I believe that's it.
I believe that's it. And once again, as far as lighting, it's been agreed that they'll conform to the review letter. Stormwater and grading, it's not required. And then you're grading anything else that's forth in Mr. Bott's letter.
So just because there's conversation, existing poles that remain in there, but new heads on the light, only because that is one way, any future, we'll go to reply.
Okay, so... So existing...
Poles remain.
Poles, but that's on the...
Right, and new heads, but there was some, there's some discussion as to what it means on the...
New heads, new lighting heads, correct?
And what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, is your motion on the floor to approve application 24-07, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Van Alen, may we have a vote, please, Ben?
Mr. Dr. R.
Yes.
Mr. Alperon?
Yes.
Ms. Fishin?
Yes.
Mr. Buckheim?
Yes.
Mr. Van Alen?
Yes.
Ms. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Wogan?
Yes.
Mr. Shapiro?
Yes.
And Mr. Cattell?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations. Hashlalah. Real quick, real quick. At this point in time, we're going to open up the meeting to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter whatsoever, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and be heard.
Do you know if the public wants to speak this time, or they go to the vote, vote board?
Mr. O'Callaghan, Mr. Woods, I'm all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll adjourn this meeting at 8:35. Thank you very much.